Hello and welcome to East Hampton Media's City Council at Large Voters Forum. Thanks for watching, and I'd like to introduce tonight's candidates, who are David Ewing, Tamara Smith, Daniel Carey, Peg Coniff, and Joe McCoy. Welcome. Should we just jump right in to opening statements? Okay, we're gonna start, we're just gonna go left to right if that's okay, and then we'll start questions the same way, and then we'll alternate if that works out okay for everyone. Okay, great, Mr. Ewing?
Good evening, I'm Dave Ewing, candidate for City Council at Large. I've always believed very strongly in civic involvement, and I believe that if you're not a part of the solution, you're a part of the problem. In my previous hometown of South Hadley, I was an elected town meeting member for 10 years before moving here to the Treehouse community to work with foster children. Two years ago, with no one stepping up to take out nomination papers against Karen Cadieux for mayor, I did. I knew at that time that I was a long shot to win, but that experience totally immersed me in East Hampton city government. Since that time, I've kept up out of interest on everything going on in our city, and I feel most qualified at this time to be City Council at Large. Thank you.
Ms. Tamara Smith?
Hi, my name is Tamara Smith, and this is my second term that I'm running for, for City Councilor at Large. I moved to East Hampton in 2007, and I brought my family with me, and we have five children who are ages seven, nine, 11, 13, and 18. So I was thinking today how I've really seen them growing up in East Hampton, and I've been reflecting on how East Hampton has changed and grown as a community in the past seven years. It's really rewarding to be able to be part of that process and be able to have a stake in what the city is going to look like as my family continues to live here throughout our lives, and what my children's futures will look like based on the opportunities that are present in the city in which they live. So I'm really happy to be serving as a City Councilor. I'm really looking forward to a second term where I can really start to connect a lot of the civic engagement at the local level with some of the policies at the state level, and make sure that East Hampton is well represented and continues to be well represented within the larger Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Thank you.
Mr. Dan Carey?
Hi, I'm Dan Carey. Thank you to the East Hampton Media for having us this evening, for putting this on. The reason I'm running for City Councilor at Large is very simple. I love East Hampton. I grew up in East Hampton, it's my hometown, and growing up in East Hampton, I've watched the city become a city, and I've watched the city grow and the city change in so many positive ways. I really want to be a part of that growth and help the city in the future. That's what led me two years ago to run for school committee. I was elected in 2013, just on my first term as school committee right now, and I saw an opportunity when there was two at-large positions open in City Council to continue to help the city, representing the whole city in an at-large capacity. And I not only want to help the city, but I believe that I can help East Hampton as it continues to grow. Growing up, we've watched East Hampton change, you know, we used to ride bikes around town, and now we have the bike path right through town. We used to climb around the fence and go fishing down in National Park, and now we can sit down on that beautiful new boardwalk. There's a lot of great things going on here, so I'm excited to be a part of it, and I look forward to continuing to represent the entire city as a City Councilor. Thank you.
Ms. Peg Coniff?
Hi, my name is Peg Coniff, and I am running for City Council at Large. And I moved to East Hampton about four years ago in 2012. And originally, I came from Chicago, and I have been in New England about 27 years. And all, in that time, I have not really found a place that I wanted to put down roots until I got here. I love the city, I love the people in the city, I love the vibe, the uniqueness, and I want to be a part of that and help the citizens and the people of the city of East Hampton have a voice in their future. I have a financial background, my degree is in finance, and I think I can lend that to a lot of good use here on the City Council, and I look forward to playing a role and being a voice for the city. Thank you.
And Mr. Joe McCoy?
Great, thank you. Thank you again, East Hampton Matters Media. Sorry about that. Yeah, I'm probably the older guy here, I've been on the City Council actually for 10 years now, and I've had the additional privilege of part of that time serving as the City Council President. And unlike, very similar to Mr. Carey here, I'm running a lot because I love East Hampton, but probably as much important, I'm just incredibly excited about our future and what lies in front of us. The last 10 years, I've been lucky to be part of, if not part of, or at least involved with so many of the changes, everything from seeing the arts community grow and it becoming an incredible, not only quality of life tool we have, but also a financial tool. I've seen the mills get revitalized and industry come in there. We see our education system continuing to improve with new facilities and higher test scores. So the future for East Hampton looks incredibly bright, and so I'm very excited about the future. We certainly have challenges ahead of us, like most small cities and towns, budget. Budget, budget is always a problem, and so we're constantly facing the challenge between diminishing income and expenses. So I might hope to be able to serve again, and so I'd ask for your vote in the third. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'd like to just go right into the first question. Is everyone okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. This question does not lend itself to additional dialogue, but maybe it does, so we'll see. So the first question, and I'm gonna start with David, and we're gonna go all the way around, and then we'll start with Tamara and go all the way around, is if elected, what subcommittee would you join, and why?
I would join a finance subcommittee by choice because that's where my education and professional experience lies.
I really enjoy being on the Appointments Subcommittee right now, and I think there is a lot more to do on the Appointments Subcommittee specifically with making sure that we have a larger pool of candidates who are running. So I would really love to see my role in the Appointments Committee continue.
I suppose we need to sit down and see where the need is with the current other City Councilors, and see between the six subcommittees. I don't want to knock somebody out, I'd say the Ordinance Subcommittee and the Public Safety Subcommittee are both two of the six that stand out to me as important, that I enjoy working on.
Great. Peg?
I think, given my background, certainly the Finance Committee would be the first choice. I think that I have a strong background in finance, I've worked in a lot of projects, project management in the job that I have today. I'm aware of how to make difficult decisions with limited resources, and I understand that whole process. And so I believe that committee would lend itself pretty well to my skills.
And Joe?
Thank you. I think, similar to Mr. Ewing, the two probably would come to my mind would be Finance, because you're directly involved with all the expenses and the funds and how the money is gonna be used, so I think that's really important. But also Ordinance is really interesting, a very active committee, constantly different, either zoning changes come through, or even just general ordinances for what is allowed in the city. One that came up recently is, you know, what's the rules for food trucks? Do we have any rules? So that's a really interesting committee to be on, because you're right on the front of molding changes and what needs to be corrected in East Hampton.
Okay, great. Doesn't seem like there's much general discussion on that, huh? Unless anyone has something that they want to add?
I guess the one thing I would say is that I really would enjoy trying to be on all of the different committees at different times. I don't like to think of one person being the forever go-to person for any particular committee, so I would love to try out all the committees. I think my strengths would probably be apparent after I was on multiple different committees, but we're not there yet, so.
What committees are you on now?
Right now, I'm on Ordinance, and I am on Appointments.
I mean, the committee are interesting, you know, because we have a set number of committees, and each councilor is actually asked to serve on two of them, so you actually get two of the ones you want. And they bridge a pretty big range of everything, from appointments to rules and regulations to public safety, so there's quite a range. And I think what we always try to do, especially with new counselors coming on, is have someone who's been on the council for a while as maybe the chair of these committees, to show the rules and how you get things done, and how you find answers, and so I think it's good to have a nice mixture of new and old, because the old certainly has the experience, and the new hopefully may have some different ideas.
Next question, and this goes to Tamara. And this question, I'm going to credit to Mary Serez, I'm a Springfield Republican, and reads as follows: "East Hampton is one of the few communities in Massachusetts that does not post minutes of public meetings online. East Hampton does not post special permit applications, zoning board appeals, restaurant inspections, or other public documents to the city website. Reporters were told last spring they could not have an electronic copy of the mayor's budget proposal because no one in City Hall could make a PDF using the available software. Does East Hampton have a technology problem, or does East Hampton have a transparency problem? And what can an individual City Councilor do to help improve citizen access to public documents?"
I think there are several different layers in that question, so I'm going to start with the technology part of that. I think the fact that we are in this room right now having a televised debate is showing that we do have the capacity for technology, and I love that our meetings are recorded and put online. I think it's a great way to have accountability for the meetings themselves. In terms of a lot of the other ways that we could start to really utilize social media and different technology, the internet, to be transparent in East Hampton, I think we've already started to do that, and I think having the minutes online, having the actual meetings online is a beginning. But I think we really need to be cautious of rules and regulations, particularly when it comes to making sure that we're not having forums that are not considered open public meetings, because quickly, social media can turn into that sort of an atmosphere when you post a question and suddenly people have very strong opinions and are arguing with each other. So in terms of information, I think it's really great to share information. I really want to be transparent as a community. I'm also aware that who is having access to that information varies according to their available resources at home, whether or not someone has the capacity to get onto the computer themselves, whether or not they are linked in to different social media. So I don't favor technology over any other aspects of sharing information, but I do see it as necessary to put as in addition to other ways of spreading information. So I think I would really love to see us move in that direction in the future.
Okay. Dan?
I wouldn't say East Hampton has a technology problem or a transparency problem, just overall blanket. It's amazing how far we've already come in these regards, and you know, the budget and the meeting minutes and everything like this, it's public record and it's available. If you want to come to City Hall and get it, as far as putting it online, a lot of that has already happened. You know, if you think about, maybe not with those exact documents, but how far the websites come, the East Hampton website, in putting up agendas and different things, the amount of documents you can get on that website now is incredible compared to what it has been in the past. And that continues to be a growing source, that website. So I think that's something, if, that we're gonna continue, I would hope, as we move forward, and to make those, these little problems as they pop up, we can fix them as they come, as we've already, but started to do this with the website and posting different documents on there. Hopefully, that's something we can continue in the future.
Okay, thank you. Peg? Would you like me to repeat the question, actually? Would you like a refresher?
Sure, go ahead.
Okay. I just know that sometimes it's easier to track, you know. So rather, we heard the first part, but does East Hampton have a technology problem, or does East Hampton have a transparency problem? And what can an individual City Councilor do to help improve citizen access to public documents?
I would say that as a newcomer to this process and to this city, I can't really speak to whether we have a technology problem. I think we may have limitations, but I don't know that I would define that as a problem per se. I think all of the issues that were raised in the question around what is difficult to get a hold of could conceivably be one-offs, or they could be just the individual that they spoke to at the time. As the others have mentioned, this information is available in the clerk's office. So I think from a technological perspective, I don't know yet if it's a problem, and from a transparency perspective, I can only go based on the information that I have at my availability, and I can tell you that as a candidate trying to get up to speed on some of the issues, there is a wealth of knowledge on the website, and I have been able to locate a number of insightful documents, I've been able to reach out to a number of individuals who've been very forthcoming with information. So I do not at all believe that East Hampton has a transparency problem. That, as I said, there may be some technological issues or limitations, but I would never classify the transparency as being a problem in this city.
Okay, thank you. Joe?
Great, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I certainly wouldn't say we have a transparency problem from the council perspective, particularly, I'm really proud of the kind of stuff we have done to make everything transparent and accessible. I think about a year or so, the city asked to have all meetings recorded for, recording public meetings. I think the City Council was the only committee that voted it absolutely must have your meetings videotaped. A lot of the other committees are recommended, but the City Council took a very strong stand on that. As a past City Council President, I initiated a Facebook page, and I would like to say it's perfect and up to date, but it's gotten behind, and I apologize for that. But it is, again, a way to reach out, but to Counselor Smith's point, there's a fine line between open meeting laws, you have to very be careful what kind of discussion you get online talking about issues without becoming a violation of that. As far as really addressing the technology part, I would have to say, I agree with everyone here, that there's a lot of information on our website. What I will say, I think it could be more web-friendly. I'm not particularly, you know, I'm probably in the middle of the road of how user-friendly I am with computers and websites, and I just find some of the, trying to find the information is a little bit clumsy for me. But then I would ask someone where it is, oh, it's right here, and I guess I just never would have thought how to get there. So I don't think there's transparency a problem, and I don't think it's an IT problem, but I think things could be done better, things could be more user-friendly.
Okay, is there any general discussion on that? On the issue of transparency? David! Oh, thank you. David? So as a new moderator, I'm not used to this format, and sometimes, I did it in the first school committee debate, we forgot and skipped someone entirely, and she was so polite, she didn't say anything, and thank you so much for saying something, because I'm not that experienced with this.
I believe the technology is definitely here, but anytime any individual wants to access public documents and doesn't know how, there's a problem in transparency, whether it's unintentional or not. As an individual City Council, you can really work as hard as possible to streamline that and to make it, every step of it, as easy as possible and as communicable as possible to the public.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a great point, and I think we, you know, all our counselors, I know it's in the paper a lot recently about Counselor Hayes, how much she has reached out and been a really nice mediator for some neighbors in her district. And so I think, besides the overall city transparency, of course, every counselor has a responsibility to be as flowing with information, to be as helpful to constituents, to find that information as best they can.
Okay, moving on, and this question goes to Dan Carey. "Local cities and towns seem to agree that dwindling state aid is making it hard for them to balance their budgets, and most state senators are constantly advocating for more state dollars to come back to their home district. Would you support a Prop 2.5 override, and if not, do you see a more long-term solution to the problem of insufficient state funding to support cities and towns?"
I think that's a definite problem that East Hampton faces, like, as you said, and so many other cities and towns are facing as well. As a City Councilor, to address the second question first, I think it's important that we communicate with our state representatives, and there's a lot of state funding available as far as grants and other things that we need to be working hard at to get. And if there's a problem with the way things are being funded now at the state level, that definitely needs to be addressed. That's something we've seen in school committee, and it's something that our chairperson, Deb Luzenya, works very hard at, working with the state, state reps and state senators at, and the state is looking at right now. I attended with Deb and with Superintendent Follinsby a public hearing that the State Committee had at North Hampton High School last year, and we submitted a letter, and hopefully, what comes out of that committee will really help us as far as funding for the schools, which is such a huge part of the overall city budget. As far as the 2.5 Prop override, right now, what East Hampton needs to do is have a 2.5 Prop override debt exclusion and commit itself to building a new elementary school. And we need to do that because it's the right thing to do for the children and grandchildren of East Hampton, it's the smart thing to do for the future of East Hampton, if we can get the elementary school building on par with our high school, that'll help to start eliminate some of the choice and charter problems that we have in our school budget. And it's something that can be done fiscally responsibly, and that'd be the job of the City Council to make sure that that gets done fiscally responsibly. And so I think that's where we need to start as far as helping to fix the overall budget, is to do that for the schools.
Thank you, Peg.
I think the problem that East Hampton faces with limited resources is not unique to our city, and everyone has to face these challenges across the state. In terms of a Prop 2.5, I think the timing is not right right now for that. I think, as Dan mentioned, a priority right now needs to be our schools. And I think that one of the ways that we can increase our, or at least maintain our expenditures, is by working to ensure that our schools are the kinds of schools that small families and new families want to have their children attend. And I think a new school lends itself to that ability to retain the students in this city, and then by retaining the students, you can build up more goodwill, bring in more families who want to have that good kind of education, and that then builds on momentum. So at this point, I think that a debt override is what we need to accomplish the building of the new elementary school, and I think at some point, we can have a discussion about Prop 2.5, but I think right now, the timing is off and we need to focus on the schools.
Thank you. Joe?
Yeah, thank you. I mean, I can attest, being on City Council for 10 years, the budgets are tight, and I think everyone seems to think, well, there's a pot of money that someone isn't using, but I can really attest for everything that I know, there is no pot of money there, and it is always impressive when you have department heads, like, I believe it was DPW was driving around with a truck whose floorboards were old stop signs. And so these are real issues of really low money, and so there is something that needs to be done. But these employees do an incredible job with what they have. I believe, I can't remember the figures right off, but the last meeting, the mayor read off how much money the city has saved by the department doing their own work. So that being said, it's very tight, but we have outstanding employees who do a great job for the city. Now, as far as debt overrides and school exclusions, I know personally, I think something needs to be done. There's a great argument, just the school come first, and that will be a slower build for quality of life and bringing people in with tax dollars, or is it something that, something so urgent that a proposition override may be required first? I'm glad to say, that is not my decision, obviously, this will first go to voters, so ultimately, it will be the voters of the city, of which way they might want to go. I suspect probably a school choice will come up, a building choice will probably be the first thing on the ballot, we'll see.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Ewing?
I definitely support a proposition 2.5 override, only if that money is tied to education and to our schools. We now have a new high school, but White Brook Middle School needs so much work. Many of our elementary schools are multiple decades old. We need to really invest in our educational system, and that will help solve the problem of people leaving for charter schools and school choice.
Thank you. Tamara?
I think that the schools are the heart of any city, and when, before I was a City Councilor, I was involved with the 2.5 override, I'm gonna say, campaign for the schools. And I wish I had already served on City Council when I had done that, because I really could see, afterwards, I could see that there were many people who really have very strong opinions about East Hampton and the affordability of East Hampton. And a 2.5 override was very daunting to a lot of people, even with the math out there. And I think that really has to do with the demographics of the city, when we look at the age of many of the residents and the changing needs of the schools. To look at a 2.5 override at this point, I would really encourage any voter, if this does come forth, to really consider how that money would be used, and if it would be used for the schools, how would it also be accounted for with the other municipal departments? And I say that not because I don't want to give to the schools, I say that because when we were trying to do that last time, one of the questions were, well, what would happen in the long run if schools don't get this money? And it really became a divisive point for the 2.5 proposition override. My children used to go to Maple School, and at Maple School, they did not have access to a gymnasium, they did not have access to an auditorium, and they did not have access to the same library resources as Pepin and Center School do. So I really am in favor of a new elementary school building, and when you have such a small city, I have noticed that voters and the businesses and the municipal government and different offices really do not want to see any one department fail at the, or succeed at the expense of another department. And when, for example, when the fire needed extra, oh, sorry, thank you.
But we can now open up for general discussion, so.
Okay. Well, what I was going to say, if I could continue with the general discussion, is that a building debt exclusion is not a forever tax, it's a shorter duration of a tax. And when I saw the high school being built, and I was asking a lot of people in the community how they felt about the difference between a 2.5 versus a debt exclusion, I really think a lot of people just didn't quite understand those issues. I'm really excited to see a lot of grassroots education advocacy groups really coming to life in East Hampton, to teach residents about how schools have changed, how technology has changed our schools, and how a lot of the mandates from the states have really changed what our schools need. And in order to really tackle that, we need to look at this from our entire municipality and support the schools, but not to the exclusion of the other departments or the other needs of the city.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I kind of agree, and it's a very, you know, it's a very tough subject, because we said we have a lot of wonderful departments, and I think a lot of departments, they certainly would not say it out loud, but I think school is always given a priority. It is 67% of our budget goes to education, I'm saying that's, you know, for me, I think it's worth it. And actually, we actually go, I think it was 800, 900,000 above what the state mandated, so we always, I think, go more for education. But I said, these departments are certainly are really hurting, many of them, that, you know, people complain about the streets, and people complain about, you know, the number of officers we have or something, and so all these are obviously part of the big pie that Counselor Smith recommended, talked about. And so, you know, it's a tough question, I am in favor of a school, and I think probably the school, elementary school, would be the first vote to take. But I do, I am worried that a lot, the whole city needs money, and I think we can't be too focused at only the education.
In a perfect world, I think everyone would want a fair share of the pie, but, you know, for the next term, our schools really have to be our priority.
And I think we can make the schools our priority by having a debt exclusion and more investiture in trying to make sure that a new school comes. And I think some of the big decisions right now have to be, what type of a new school are we looking towards as a community? Are we looking for having only Maple School redesigned and refabbed, or are we looking at a pre-K through 4, or are we looking at a pre-K through 8? And I really welcome the dialogue from the overall community, because there are obvious pros and cons to each of those developments.
I think that would be something for the school committee to decide. I think that would be something for the school committee to decide.
Well, I think that we'll be hearing a lot of it in months to come.
This is an exciting time to have that conversation, because we've already been accepted very far along the process with the MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority. And they get letters of interest from cities, from tons and tons of cities, and they take in a very few amount of people, and they took in East Hampton. And then we've even moved even farther than that, not even just being taken in, but we've been invited into the feasibility stage. And a lot of that information that you're talking about, Tamara, with the three different types of school possibilities, is something that they're going to look at, which is unique. You can only submit a letter of interest on one school, which we did for Maple School, because it was built in 1897, which is just incredible. 1897, 1903, and 1912 were when our elementary school buildings were built. I think they're the three oldest public school buildings in the state. That's what I've been told, which, if that doesn't tell you right there, it's time for some new buildings. I don't know what else would. But it'll be really cool to see what the MSBA comes back with as far as, and it's great that they're even considering, you know, the possibility of replacing three or four buildings. So it's an exciting time for East Hampton, and it's, you know, that's why this is going to come up soon. And I believe the debt exclusion for the Public Safety Complex is going to come off the books pretty soon. And so to be able to take that off and put this on maybe simultaneously, might make that hit a little, lighten that hit a little bit. But it's exciting, and I'm looking forward to see what happens.
But also, the problem is actually, it does, it's not just school committee, because as city councillors, we ultimately are the ones to decide if we pass the question, whether it be a debt exclusion or even override, onto the voters. Now, I think most of the councillors agree, voters should always determine, so I think there probably wouldn't be a problem moving that on. But ultimately, it will be the city council will decide if this debt exclusion will be something that the voters would see.
And that's something I think with transparency is where I completely agree with you, Joe. I saw last time there, when we brought up the two and a half percent exclusion, it really was to the discretion of the city council as to whether or not that would actually go onto the ballot. And if citizens were wanting a two and a half override, I think part of transparency of government is to hear that out and allow that to happen if that's what the majority of voters are wanting for East Hampton.
No, no, that, but also get behind it and actively support it.
Okay. We have to move on to the next question, but that was a good hearty discussion. And so this goes to Peg. Peg, what are your thoughts on over quota liquor licenses and how much is too much?
Well, I can tell you that I have not given that a whole lot of thought. And so I don't have a lot of information on that. If the question is related to how many establishments in the city should have liquor licenses and how many is too many, then, you know, not knowing where we are now, what the baseline is, or how many new establishments we are bringing in that would require those, I don't have a lot of detail on that. I can tell you that where I would be concerned is where these liquor licenses were going, which area of the city they were going into, and what that might do to the dynamic of that particular area. But beyond that, I honestly can say that I have not spent much time on that. So I'll have to defer to my fellow candidates here for some additional information.
Joe?
Yeah, I get it, and I feel badly for Peg, because there are some of these questions, certainly, there is an advantage of being on city council. But as far as over quota liquor licenses, to kind of summarize, the state gives liquor licenses based on your population. And we have been maxed out on those liquor licenses for quite a while. Legislation started this new process where you can petition for an over quota liquor license. It's very similar to a full liquor license, except it is different, and then you cannot move it from one location. It is assigned to one location. We have used them in the past strategically. For instance, I helped give a over quota liquor license to the Assange School, which doesn't sound right, but they also, they also have, you know, a small bar there, basically, but were tied to the building. So it is to say that if they ever knock that building down, the liquor license would go away. Because we felt it was like a part of that, of that gazebo, a part of that rotary that was important to keep. So I think they can be used very well for, they can be used well for economic tools. I think there is actually something from the ordinance committee to ask for quite a few of them to target certain areas to bring business in. And so in that case, I can, I think they can be a very valuable tool for cities and towns.
Okay, great. And David?
I love a shot of schnapps in a microbrew myself, but there's so many places in this city where I can go and get it. And everywhere I go, there's alcohol. I think that any more would be too many.
Tamara?
I think that liquor licenses have changed in the state of Massachusetts over time. And a lot of the changes that we're seeing in the city of East Hampton with how we're considering over quoted licenses is a reflection of this. We've had a lot of new, new microbrews come to East Hampton, and they are under farm-to-poor, I can't remember, farm-to-poor license. It's slightly different from going into an establishment and having an over quota liquor license. There have been a lot of discussion in East Hampton of how we're going to generate more income. And when we look at the different places where we can really have new businesses come, I think having liquor licenses strategically placed throughout the city makes a lot of sense. Union Street is the bridge between the Cultural District and Main Street. And they're established on both of those, but there's a pretty big spot there that at nighttime, that's a darker area, there's not as much going on, and there's less walking between those two endpoints as a result. When we look at the industrial mills and the potential for the mills, having more strategic over quota license available there and prioritized there could really revitalize the mills, as we're already seeing with a lot of different businesses taking place there. So I am in support of it. I also have children, and I don't want them to be able to get a drink on every single corner. And I think we're a responsible community. We actually have quite a few healthy coalition supports for the youth in East Hampton. So I would really like to see that obviously continue if we do have more liquor licenses.
Great. Dan?
Just to segue right from Tamara's comments, Union Street definitely needs a facelift. And I think that's something that the work's going to get started on soon, and it's going to be great, you know, like we did with Cottage Street, regardless of even the liquor licenses. And also, East Hampton's a responsible community. I love that statement, and it's so true. East Hampton has grown so much, and we've seen that growth, not just in the amount of people who are moving here and who's moving here, but in the restaurants and in the arts community and the small businesses. There's a lot going on in East Hampton right now. And part of that is the breweries, and part of that is the restaurants. There are some nicer places to eat in East Hampton than I remember growing up right now. And a lot of that, some of that has to do with these over quota liquor licenses. Some of these newer restaurants depended on those, and a number of different kinds of licenses, whether it's seasonal, or it's just a beer and wine, or if it is an over quota license. So it's a wonderful way to continue to grow the community and to help out the struggling East Hampton economy. How far is too far? .08.
General discussion?
I think, I mean, again, I talk about, I think I'm in favor of them, and I think there are several safeguards that come into place. First of all, the, our own liquor licensing board has some very strict rules where any kind of establishment serving liquor can be located. There's distances from churches, there's distance from schools. And so there's quite a bit of protection already into some of the regulations as far as where a liquor license can be, can be located. And also, I kind of like the idea that it is relatively a free market. Obviously, they just don't stay in there. If you don't have a good business plan, if you don't have something that sells, you're not going to be able to survive even with that liquor license. So I think on some level, it will be somewhat self-regulating, and that you have to be able to survive as a business as well.
This is something you see across the state, different communities, looking at that formula of how many you get per population. And from East Hampton to Boston, you know, and everything in between, that's, it's an issue that comes up a lot. Whether or not they get approved is town to town, and so I think it can be a good tool.
Mr. Ewing, was it South Hadley that asked for like 10 or something? Was that, am I right? Was it Hadley or South Hadley that had quite a few of these themselves?
How many?
I think it was a while back. I thought Representative Seibek was telling me that, and I can't remember where they were located. Obviously, I got more focused on East Hampton, but I thought there was either South Hadley or Hadley that had asked.
South Hadley to East Hampton, yes.
I believe Hadley on Route 9 there was looking for quite a few, because they're trying to really up the businesses there. And then if you look over at Holyoke, they have, in the hills of Holyoke, they have established a lot more over quota liquor license there as a strategic move to have more businesses come into that part of the city.
Okay, great. The next question goes to Joe. Recently, the EDIC made recommendations for a city ordinance which limits big box developers. What is your vision for the economic development of the city? And it's a couple parts here. And how do you balance the support for small business and attract larger businesses to increase the tax base?
Yeah, I mean, I think, first of all, it's a great question. I was really kind of honored to be involved with that. The local, the residents who submitted asked me if I would help introduce it, so I was very happy with the work they did. I think they did an outstanding job, and it is, to this day, one of the instances that I think is like perfect democracy at work, in that when it was first introduced, there was complaints on both sides. And then over a period of discussions and negotiations and compromise, both sides agreed with this bill, and we had people who were against it initially supporting it. And I think it was a good plan. First of all, we are a relatively small square area. We don't have the size North Hampton does. And North Hampton does have, even they have, they have a limit. I believe theirs is 90,000 square feet. So limits are not uncommon. We set ours, I believe, at 50,000, which was well thought out, looked at a lot of different buildings, what would that mean? The already approved Stop and Shop would still fall within that range, so it wasn't anything that would be contradictory to what has passed already. And then what I also liked about it, there was this additional, let's change the amount of size you need to have a small business development. So it decreased, I think it was from five acres to three acres. So it again, was more friendly to small business. And as far as how I see East Hampton developing, I think we're a small business. I think there's, we have incredible character, not only with our art, with our small business. And I would like to see a multitude of small businesses rather than one big tax, you know, income generating. I think it would be, would allow for a better quality of life and a more sustainable, more sustainable city.
Okay. David?
The vast majority of residents I've spoken to do not want to see a big box in East Hampton. Our very unique small businesses that we have are what makes us special and makes us vibrant. Bringing anything bigger than, say, 2,500 square feet in would threaten them.
Tamara?
I was really proud too to be part of the legislation that allowed for us to put a limit on the size of buildings, or, I'm sorry, the ordinance to put a size limit on buildings. Sociologists call this the McDonaldization of society, where we start to see more and more things looking alike when we have unstoppable development going on within a city. And we've seen a lot of comparable sized cities around the area that have that. And frankly, if I wanted to be able to go to every fast food restaurant that is available in a lot of the other cities, that's where I would have moved. I really love the uniqueness of East Hampton, and over the last seven years, or eight years now that I've lived here, I've really seen that grow and develop. And in terms of the development within the city, we have a wonderful, wonderful arts community. We have a great city planner, and the grants that have been brought into East Hampton to really allow that economy to flourish, as well as having mixed models of use within many of our buildings, is a unique characteristic of East Hampton. It's the opposite of McDonaldization. It's putting a real character to the city of East Hampton that people remember our city by. So really encouraging more small business, encouraging more arts and grants and funds to have more public artworks within our city, which really utilize the beauty of the area, as well as looking at businesses within the mills and the legacy mills within our, within our community, seemed to make more sense to me than trying to lure a big box store into East Hampton. So it was a great process to be a part of, and it was really interesting to see how people from across the aisle came together and really negotiated and worked with each other to come up with a solution.
Great. Dan?
Can you just repeat the last part of the question about the economic?
Sure. Excuse me. What is your vision for the economic development of the city, and how do you balance support for small businesses and attract larger businesses to increase the tax base?
Awesome. I think what East Hampton needs to do is continue being the accepting, welcoming, and creative place that it's been. I mean, look at the new businesses that have come in, and it's everything from the arts to small businesses, to breweries, to a Stop and Shop, which, as Joe mentioned, has already been approved to come in. And so that quote-unquote "big box ordinance" isn't going to stop a Stop and Shop size or other large company from coming in and paying taxes and employing residents. But we also are known now for being such a great community, where people want to be here. I look at the Eastworks building, that first floor, you got an RMV, you got restaurants, you got dance studios. Second and third floor, there's office space. Fourth floor, there's residents. Down in the basement, they're doing everything from fixing bikes to making guitars to metal smiths. And we see that across the town, from, you know, just the small businesses in Cottage Street and how that's building up, and the Cultural District that it is now, to, you know, the industry zones and some of the big factories. Look at the big employers in town. It's the factories, and it's Williston, and it's Biggie's Food Land. And it's just amazing that we've got that kind of mix here. And, you know, you look at the master plan from a few years ago, and it starts off, it says in 2027, East Hampton is going to retain its soulful mill town feel, but it's also going to grow up and be, you know, a model, small city of the 21st century. And it's amazing, looking at that master plan, how much of, how far we've already come to realize some of those goals, and of course, how far we have to go to continue to realize those goals. But East Hampton's a special place, and we're drawing people in already, and I think that's what we need to continue to do.
There was an interesting point that came up during the whole discuss. Oh, I'm sorry, Peg, I was just, I forgot to comment.
No problem. I agree with what has been said so far. I think that the limiting nature of our acreage and the size of the city does limit us to the kinds of businesses that we want to attract. I think part of the appeal of East Hampton is the small business nature, the welcoming nature. Tamara mentioned the ability of the arts to thrive here. I think all of that is very, very important. And when we think about development, we do need to think about not only the vistas and the land that we have and maintaining that any buildings that may come into play be mixed use to ensure that we can solve a lot of issues with a single building. We don't want large footprints. I think that really would take away from the appeal of the city. But I think where we will ultimately struggle, and something that we need to keep our eye on, is that as we bring in businesses, if those businesses want to grow, we may not have the space for it, because the mills are only so big. And if a, if a company wanted to get additional space, they would have to relocate outside of the city. So we want to make sure that the right kind of development comes into the city, the right kind of businesses. I think the smaller niche market is really where we will excel, and I think that's really what people want. And as long as things remain affordable and unique, I think that we will continue to thrive. So I encourage us to continue to look at the kinds of businesses we want, but I think that small business is really the way that we need to progress as we, as we move forward.
Okay, general discussion?
Joe?
Yes, sorry. Can I go, Peg? Yeah, no, I was gonna, one of the point, and again, I think the proposal that was brought up by the people who introduced this ordinance change, I think, was really well thought out. And one of the things they brought up, which is, like, try chewing, think of, you know, this initial cash cow that you may see with some of these big buildings. If they do leave, the blight they can leave behind is just astounding. When you think of what a Home Depot looks like, you can probably imagine in your mind what that building looks like. And so to repurpose a huge building that everyone can identify as like Home Depot is very, very difficult. And so although it may initially seem like a tax base, it could be a real, you know, albatross if that does close and you have this huge, basically unusable building. does close and you have this huge, basically unusable building sitting there. So, it was, it was a well-thought proposal, I thought.
Those shell buildings don't have the same character as some of these mill buildings that I've got already.
Exactly, yeah, right.
And just to echo something that the councilors mentioned earlier, it was great as a citizen to watch that process go through, and really inspiring, and made me want to be a part of it, to see, you know, the good discussions, not just among the citizens in the council, but among the council members themselves. Not every governmental agency can work together towards a common goal, and we saw that in East Hampton with our city council, and I think that's pretty special.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on. Here's a charged question, which is, "Each year, charter and school choice negatively impact our local school district. What solutions do you propose?" This goes to David.
I'm sorry. Repeat your question, please.
"Each year, charter schools and school choice negatively impact our local school district. What solution can you propose?"
"Money for education through a proposition two-and-a-half override to improve our schools so that we don't lose as many children out to charter schools."
I think that this is a really hotly debated topic within East Hampton. We have a new charter school in the city limits, and with a new charter school coming into the city, it mandated that there had to be a certain number of openings for local students. It's unfortunate that, as a direct result of that, East Hampton has to face the financial difficulty of the state requirement for school districts to have to pay the charter school for a student going there, particularly when that charter school is moving into the city. This is a state problem. This is a problem that really needs a lot of grassroots organizing. We're starting to see that at the East Hampton level, and what I really want to make sure as a city councillor is that we don't start coming into personal attacks for people who have made the decision to put their children in charter schools versus the public schools. We have a larger task here to really reevaluate the state plan and charter schools and how that funding is distributed. So, I look forward to continuing to work with the schools and with the different people in East Hampton who are really interested in organizing at a local level to affect state politics, particularly with charter and choice, choice as a, school choice as an issue. Thanks.
Dan?
Choice and charter is a big issue, and it's a problem, it's a statewide problem. But here in East Hampton, the biggest thing we can do is outreach. The biggest thing we can do is get people into the school. The percentage, I don't have the number in front of me, is pretty high of people who are choicing out who never entered the schools. They're not leaving because East Hampton's a problem. They're leaving because, for whatever reason, they think it's a problem, or they heard something through the grapevine, through the rumor mill. And the people who do step into the East Hampton schools, for the most part, like what they find. I mean, I can't tell you, just the last two years on school committee, how many great things I've heard, how many people have stopped me to mention or sent an email to me or to the whole committee about how great the staff is, how great the teachers are, how wonderful the education is that they're getting. Doesn't mean it's perfect. We have a lot of things we can do better, starting with building the new elementary school, as I mentioned earlier. Walking through Maple School, it's evident that we need a new building, and never mind Senator Pepin also need improvement. But Maple, when you're down in that basement, and you feel like you're in the basement of a building built in the 1800s, because you are, and that's where lunch is, and that's where the gym is. And so, I think we have improved the buildings. It's going to help improve the public perception. But it's also about getting the word out and making sure people know about all the great things that are happening in the East Hampton schools, because there are a lot of great things happening there.
Peg?
I think, I think it is a problem. It is a statewide problem. It's, it's by and large, a national problem that, that students and parents are selecting their not-local schools to place their children. And I think a lot of that has to do with, you know, the charter schools were, came about because there was something about the education that was local that could not be served. So, the charter schools were going to serve a different population or provide different type of learning experience than you can get at the local level. And I don't know that that's entirely come to fruition. I don't know if they have the same level of transparency, the same level of rules that you have when you're talking about a local school. I think that the whole concept of school choice and charter schools has gotten watered down as to why you might want to go in that direction. And I think that a lot of the problems that we face here locally are similar to what Dan was saying. I think that there is a perception out there that the schools here are in some way lacking. And as a result, they can get something better by living here, but going elsewhere to get the education for their students. And I don't think that that is the reality. And I think that if we, if we can find a way to encourage them to step into the schools, if they can become engaged, if we can do quite, you know, we essentially need to do a marketing of our own schools to ensure that the word is out there that we are doing very well, the teachers are doing everything they can, that I have heard nothing but great things since I've moved here. And I have to admit that before I moved here, I was hearing the same things everyone else is hearing. But I've, my, everything about it has changed, and I really do encourage people to get some information before they make those choices.
Thank you. Joe?
No, I agree. It's a, it's a big problem for budgets. And I agree, I understand the concept behind it as far as having different choices. I guess where I disagree is the city having to pay for these parents' or children's choices. I think in most other states, I think Senator Rosenberg was saying that, don't do it that way. The state does pay, or at least part of that, for the outside charter schools. But I think bringing in a little bit of what almost everyone said, I think maybe a budget, the, but debt exclusion would be part of the answer. A nicer facility would help draw people in. I think also talking, saying, reiterating what Peg said and Dan said, we really need to get the people into the schools. We really need to, you know, have them see what is here before, in their mind, they decide, "I want to go somewhere else." Because I think they'd be surprised just what a great education their kids could get here, excuse me, as well. And I think also, we just need also to do, it really is marketing. I mean, that is the reality of today. There needs to be some kind of active marketing plan to actually bring other choice kids into East Hampton. The balance there, of course, is we don't want too big classrooms, so you have to balance between bringing money in and then making your classrooms too big. But I think certainly we can market to bring in more choice. And there, some of the really out-there kind of ideas is, is it getting to the point where we need to reach out to private industries? You know, is there a baseball field that someone can put up, you know, some kind of local business sign and some kind of support? You know, are we to the point where to support our education? We need to think completely outside the box. I don't necessarily would like to see, you know, McDonald's as a sponsor. I would like to see, you know, some local businesses. But again, I think it's a challenge, and I think we have to be willing to think outside the box in this one.
Great. Can we open that for discussion? Yes, absolutely. That was, those are the next words. Except that I just wanted to take a second and just say, you guys have done very well staying those two-minute parameters, sort of naturally. So, I just want to congratulate you all on that. But let's open it up for discussion.
That's your signal, is what it is.
Yeah.
I was just going to say that I think one of the casualties of having a charter school system is the transparency and simplicity of a public school system, that it is here to provide the best education possible for students. And this used to be a tenet that we would just assume as a community. And while I understand the need to market, we don't have the budget at a public school level to be able to do that type of marketing. I'm grateful for opportunities such as having a local-access TV station to do that marketing. But I really think that part of what needs to also do is be able to lift the veil of what can and cannot be discussed, because we really try to find line between trying to convince people, "This is what is great about our school district," and also addressing, "This is what needs to be fixed within our school district," and be able to have those conversations without worrying that that's going to spark mass exodus from the schools or people running, you know, to our school district based on those, those things. So, I would really be, really be looking forward to research, actual interviews with the families who have choiced out, what the reasons were, and having more data that we can work with that can really inform our decisions of how we would do that type of marketing.
And some of this marketing has already started, and it's something the school committee's been talking about. You know, just in the two years I've been there, it's something that comes up a lot. And, you know, we've rehauled the website. Ashley Barstow, IT directors, doing an amazing job with all that stuff. And a part of, on the website is there's a section of testimonials and families saying what they love about East Hampton schools and that kind of thing. So, that whole, that marketing bit is already started. But just to touch upon the great things going on in the school, I'll just tell you about my week. On Wednesday, I went and met with the foreign exchange students who are visiting East Hampton from France, and fourteen students and two teachers over here for 10 days, visiting not just the high school, but visiting East Hampton. This is what they're learning about America, is coming to visit East Hampton. So, that's a brand-new program, first time East Hampton High School's ever done that. And then I was back to the high school the next day, and we were meeting with someone from TESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, Office of Career Techno, Technological and Vocational Education, because we're working on getting some grant funding for a new criminal justice program through the Chapter 94, Chapter 74 fundings. So, I mean, that's just a small example of the great things that are going on. And we, you know, we lose so much money to the choice and charter, but there's still work being done, you know, going after that grant funding and the behind-the-scenes work getting done to make that happen is amazing. And the state sending people out from Boston to check us out and to tell us what a great job we're doing, and we're really close to procuring those funds. And part of it's the facility, again, you know, I'm having these meetings in that brand-new building, and every time I go there, I'm picturing the old high school I graduated from, you know, in 2003. And you can sense the pride in that school, not just among the staff, among the students. So, I think that, again, just brings me back around to the elementary school buildings and how important it is to, you know, the public perception, the marketing, just the feel for the students, for the staff, for the community. That's going to be such a huge change. But also, there's all those things already ongoing, which is just another example of why East Hampton's a great place to, you know.
As far as the, to get back to the marketing of, of our schools, I think it's important also to look at those people who have not yet decided where they ultimately want to live and where their kids are going to school. So, there is, there is the component of the folks who currently live here and the decision of, "I'm going to choice out, or I'm going to go to a charter school," and we need to keep them here and, and create an environment where they want to stay. But also, to get the word out and to get that, that reputation built or the, the information that goes out that says to the folks who are contemplating where they want to put down roots, that this is a place where you're going, your children are going to get a great education, and to encourage them to move here, because that, again, helps us in the long run on a bunch of different levels that have nothing to do with education. But I think, I think we need to look beyond just the folks who are currently living here and try to change the mind of the folks in the general vicinity so that they feel like this can be a place that they want to live.
And to your first point about the marketing, that information gathering has already started also with the school committee and-
With the governor introducing legislation in the last week to uncapped the number of charter schools in the state, the reality of the fact is that they're here to stay. And what we need to do to combat that is to make sure we have a top-grade educational system that's going to take money for our schools, top-rated educators, and it's going to finally make us a place where parents want to have their children and stay here and be educated in the city of East Hampton.
And just to finish my comment, we've got surveys going out that we already started, and we're collecting that information on why people are leaving, and that's how we get that information about how many of them never even entered or are leaving first.
That's great.
And it's so important to get that information because it helps us so much more to keep our students here. You know, that's going to fix the problem more than trying to snag kids from all these surrounding towns. We keep these children here, keep our students in East Hampton, and that helps us financially in the best way. And to your point, Mr. Ewing, who I, I think we've got some fine educators here already. So, I think we got to keep that up and get that word out there, and we'll see what comes at us from Boston. But it's going to be interesting, for sure.
Yeah, I guess, I mean, my point, I wish to think that just if you had good educators, that would be the answer. And I think reality, you have to promote them, and there is a lot of perception that can stay for a long time. When I first moved to North Hampton, I'll never forget this, I mean, I'm sorry, to East Hampton, I first moved here, I told, you know, somewhere where I lived, and they said, "Oh, no, no, you don't say you, you're from East Hampton. You say you live in East Hampton." Now, I am proud of East Hampton. I will tell I live here. I wish I could say I was from here, as Dan can. But I'm really proud of it. And so, I think so much of this is perception. It's easy to put in great people. We have great people. But so much of it is changing the perception. So, people, it has to be based in fact, but changing the perception of what we have and what they, we can get here.
Okay. Thank you. So, now, we're at our last, last question of the evening, and we're going to begin with Tamara, and this is my, a fluffier question. But just to sort of give the voters at home a sense of who you are and where you fit into all these little pieces of a puzzle, which piece are you? What have you done in your career to help improve your respect of your community, and why was that important? Well?
If I'm looking at my entire life course, I started helping communities when I was a young teenager and volunteering at a nursing home in New York. As an adult, my priorities shifted a little bit. I still work with the elderly. I'm a gerontology professor and a sociology professor at Westfield State. And my activity is really all centered around what type of upbringing can I help my children have for the best life possible in East Hampton. I have worked a lot with the schools. I used to be on the school council in Pepin School. My kids are both in Maple Pepin and Center School, so we're familiar with all of them. And my work at the city council level has really been also, it's been really gratifying to be part of a community and helping it grow. And that can simply sometimes just be being available to people, being out and around in the community, but also being available to the various boards and civic engagement groups in the city, encouraging people to be a part of them, and really teaching people about how East Hampton has grown in the time that I've been here, and encouraging people to come, for example, to the Art Walks that we host each month in the city, to really see, this is some of the reasons why we have such a unique place within East Hampton.
Thank you. Dan?
Could you just repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Yeah. What have you done in, in your career to help improve your community, and why was it important?
To help improve my community and my career? Well, when I, one of my first jobs after college was working as the youth minister at Immaculate Conception Parish, which is now Our Lady of the Valley. And then after that, I was a paraprofessional here at Whitebrook Middle School, working in the autism program for a couple of years. I now work for the Northwestern District Attorney's Office, as far as my career goes, but volunteering and helping out in my community has always been an important part of what I've done even growing up. But as an adult, I'm a member of the East Hampton-St. Patrick State Parade Committee. I've been doing that for a long time. The last few years, I've kind of spearheaded the fundraising for our scholarship fund. We give money to graduating seniors from East Hampton, or the greater East Hampton area, to help them with their college expenses as they move from their senior year of high school to freshman year of college. I wish I had those numbers in front of me. It's incredible. Over the last five years, we've given over, I want to say $8,000 to a dozen students, which is just great. And then I'm also an elected member of the school committee is one way that I try to help my community. And that's something that's really special to me, in not just being a part of helping East Hampton and helping the schools grow, but doing it in an elected capacity. I want to thank the voters of East Hampton for giving me that opportunity, and I appreciate you considering me as I try to continue to help the community in this new role as city councillor at large. Thank you.
Peg?
So, you know, there's an advantage, I guess, to attaining the age that I have and beginning to look at a career in politics at this point. There's a lot of life lessons that you learn along the way, and, and a lot of the things that have brought me to this place have a lot to do with the journey that I was on personally and professionally. I have lived in Connecticut for the last 25 years prior to moving to East Hampton, and I think I mentioned it in another forum before, but that, in, in the time that I lived in Connecticut, I probably didn't live anyplace- I probably didn't live anyplace for very long. There was a, I wanted to move around and try different places before I would find where I wanted to stay, and I never really found that until I came to East Hampton. But as far as what I have done to help my communities when I was in Connecticut, probably one of the bigger focuses of the better part of 10 years or more was working with the guide dog school in Connecticut and helping the blind community with getting dogs to help them with navigating the world. And that was the most incredibly rewarding situation that I've had, because the community, the blind community and the vision impaired community is so in need of mobility and the ability to become part of a working community and being able to support themselves through jobs and so forth, and the ability to navigate around through having a guide dog is very important. So, it was very rewarding, and the feeling that I got from that has led me to want to continue to be able to provide and participate in community organizations. Thanks.
Thank you. Joe?
Well, I guess there probably hasn't been a lot career-wise. It probably has changes for me. I mean, I'm a veterinarian, so I like puppies. So, that's good. But probably from my life, being experienced, my mother was the personal secretary of Governor Grasso. And so, very early in my life, I was involved with politics, involved with civil service, and understanding needs and constituents and what they might be needed. But then, I think, then later on, I was very much involved in the same-sex marriage issue. I was one of Massachusetts organizers out here in Western Massachusetts. And so, I worked with a lot of legislators. I heard stories from people who were truly affected by it and whose life would be different or we changed if it changed. And so, that really reunited into me a reason to get involved and make a difference. And so, is that trans, that led me to city council. And from there, I feel like only gone on. I mean, I had all kinds of opportunities to help people out, to be, help with constituents. As a city councillor, president, I started like quarterly meetings, precinct meetings, to try to, you know, increase the transparency and accessibility. You know, if you can't come to us, we will go to you and try to get just informal beat and greets. And let's just talk about the issues. Let's, what's on your mind? What do you need? And so, it has certainly been everything I wanted to be and more, and I hope to continue.
Thank you. Let's move on to closing statements, and I'm thinking maybe we could go in the opposite...
Did everybody go for that?
Oh, David, thank you. David?
I think what's been absolutely the most rewarding to me has been my decades of volunteer leadership experience, particularly with youth. Started with the Metropolitan Springfield YMCA when I was in my twenties, then I was a Boy Scout leader for 20 years, then a junior achievement advisor, and I'm very proud now to be a foster grandparent of the Treehouse Community here in East Hampton.
Now, let's not jumping the gun. I'm thinking maybe we could do closing statements in opposite order of opening statements. Is that amenable?
Sure.
Okay. So, Mr. McColl?
Okay. Well, thank you. You know, I like everything really prepared for this one. I just kind of sort of say what's on my mind at the moment. Again, first, I thank the community for my 10 years I've been in city council, and again, part of I've been city council president. It has been an honor and a privilege to serve you. I have hoped that I have made you proud. I have worked for a lot of things that I think has helped this city, everything from promoting the arts, revitalizing buildings, helping become a green community. I've done a lot of things that I think have moved the city forward, and I hope in the last 10 years I've been, you can look at me as one of your consistent, reliable voices on the council. And so, I'm going to ask you again if I could please have your vote on November 3rd, so I can return to city council. Thank you.
Peg?
I have come to this position in a very circuitous manner. I had mentioned to some folks that I really wanted to get involved in local committees and local, the local organization around the city and politics. And it didn't take long before the need for people to want to play this role was very evident, that it's very difficult to find new folks who want to participate in the process. And I am honored and to be able to be a part of the process. I certainly hope to have a tenure, and I look forward to the process continuing. And I also ask that, for those of you who do not know who I am, to certainly feel free to reach out, but that I am very much interested in this role, and I ask you for your vote and your support on November 3rd. Thank you.
Dan?
I want to thank the folks at home for watching and thanking, I want to thank East Hampton Media again for putting this on. It's such an important decision that the citizens of East Hampton get to make, and it's great that they're going to make an informed decision that's so important in any election. So, thank you for being involved and for being with us this evening. And I ask you to vote for me on November 3rd and consider my professional experience, my personal experience, my two years on the school committee, chairman of the finance subcommittee, member of the school district's wellness committee, and this criminal justice board that I mentioned earlier. We're trying to get it off the ground. And I want to thank you again for your votes two years ago. It's an absolute honor to represent my hometown in this capacity, in the school committee capacity, and I look forward to continuing that representation in this new capacity. So, again, thank you.
Tamara?
Thank you. Thanks again for having us all here. I really appreciate the opportunity to talk with, well, with the fellow candidates. I was going to say with the public, but they are watching, not actually interacting. And I really want to make sure that, you know, that if you do want to reach out to me on social media, I have a Facebook account. I also have a candidate account, and I welcome questions. And I really believe in diversity within the city council. I really am very proud of being a female voice on the council. I'm really happy that I'm the only female voice running this time for city councillor at large, because the more that East Hampton changes, we also have to make sure that our representation is also diverse and representing everybody in East Hampton. And sometimes, when you move, when you're in a city and you're trying to consider how to be most civically engaged, there are so many different avenues that you can take. I became a city councillor at large in the 2013 elections, and I've only been here for two years so far. Really looking forward to the next term where I have a firm grounding and understanding not only of East Hampton politics and city council and the way that a city government is set up in Massachusetts, but also at a state political level. I came to East Hampton in 2007 from New York, so there was a lot to learn in terms of how our two states are different. And I'm proud to be a Massachusetts resident, and I look forward to the next term as a city councillor at large. Thank you.
And Mr. David Ewing?
I'm here tonight as a candidate for this position because I love this city. In the words of John Denver, I've come home to a place I've never been before. I'm retired now from full-time employment, and I have the time and the energy and the passion to focus on our future. I respectfully ask for your vote in the November election.
Okay. Thank you, candidates. I want to thank you all for coming, and I want to also just thank you for the passion that you are bringing and the devotion that you're bringing to the city. I think the city is very lucky to have each and every one of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And from East Hampton Media to you all, good night and vote on November 3rd. Thank you.